Okay, next item, please.
Discussion item. First one is policy updates.
So I'm gonna have Mr. Mustedan come up because Ms. Ali Bazey's not here. Both of her children were ill, first, you know, kindergarten students. And so I said, "Look, go home, take care of your children." So Mr. Mustedan's filling in and I filled in during the policy committee earlier, so.
Thank you.
And these have been in board briefs, so these are things that went through the committee. They were, uh, they reported out last time and now they've been in board briefs for review.
And tonight, so to continue on with the process that we have in place, when we approve new policies or change policies, we first bring them to the committee. The committee then brings them to the board. The board, they are then brought to the board as a whole as a discussion item. That's where we are tonight. And then these will be brought to the board to be, at the next meeting, to be voted on and approved. The two policies deal with information systems, both for staff and for students, with separate policy for each of them. And basically, there were just a lot of small minor changes that had to be made throughout these policies as far as dealing with information like pagers were listed and other kinds of technology that is not used. So it was better to change that, uh, to change those terms to more broad and generic terms that fit current technology.
I'd like to say too, I thank the staff that have been involved in writing this. And Ms. Ali Bazey's been taking this on, as you know, for, I think going on a year. And I thank the board policy committee because a lot of times, they found different things that really help us that we may not have thought of. And so this continuous process that's being implemented at both the college. And I think we follow the college and we're doing it. And I gotta tell you, it's very, when you look at some of these things, like a pager, I mean, who has a pager today?
Hey, speak for yourself. Dumb work.
I'm hoping to move to a pager.
So, thank you, Mr. Mustedan. Unless there's any questions. So those will be on the next agenda for approval.
Next item?
Still under discussion items, Salina Air Conditioning.
So I'm gonna ask Mr. Grzinski to come up. And this was something that went to the building and site committee. We have a donation of $175,000 that's being offered by Severstal for air conditioning specific to Salina. We've had them donate in the past. And so the board, Building and Site Committee, had discussed it and wanted it to come to the full board for discussion before there's any movement by the district.
I know, I know.
So I'll have Mr. Grzinski just kinda talk about the numbers and what we're looking at doing if this, the board is, wants to move forward with this.
Sure. A little background, previously, about three years ago, some air conditioning was installed at Salina in the auditorium and the third floor to partially air condition the warmer parts of the building. And again, a large area where students could meet. Additionally, as part of that project that Mr. Baydun, Nasser Baydun's here, who shepherded through, they installed some large, high-efficiency air filtration devices in the HVAC system that is doing a great job, in fact, in filtering out a lot of the particulate matter from the factories right across the street. Part of the problem that, that has been noticed is that the filtration system works really good, but when the weather gets a little bit warm or stuffy, they need to open the windows. And it sort of defeats the purpose. So Mr. Baydun brought train and a couple mechanical companies forward with a proposal to air condition the rest of the main Salina intermediate building. There was a couple scenarios presented. One was a high-efficiency ice-making air conditioning operation that uses a little bit less energy and uses it at non-peak times. And then there's the old-fashioned sort of powered-up chiller systems that use a little bit more air conditioning but are a lot more functionable, functional and usable throughout the day as opposed to relying on making enough ice. Anyways, that said, the prices were roughly a half a million dollars for the air conditioning equipment and the installation. That does not include a probable electrical upgrade that's gonna be needed to support the new infrastructure. And it also doesn't include permitting and stamped engineered plans going to the state and some of the, some of the background costs that go into that, that type of project. In addition, with this new proposal, a proposal was offered to the district to provide $175,000
Seventy-five thousand is what?
Uh, to go towards this project, which still leaves a deficit of roughly $425,000 to completely air condition Salina. And another piece of information going back when I believe Dr. Maleko was the principal there, they air-conditioned a core number of rooms, I believe, on the second floor.
It was part of the bond that came in, in two, the 2002 bond, when the, the middle school came in. So that was part of that process. As we, one of the things with air conditioning, and I've said this actually on the radio, is that anytime we build a new building or renovate, we add air conditioning because it's cost-effective. So we were doing that across the district. The other thing I do wanna mention, just so everyone's aware in the public and the board knows this, is that when we had the project, it was, it was actually three years, it was four years ago, because Brian Wiston started it with the first project. But they had financed the majority of the Salina, and it was only earmarked for Salina. So it wasn't like we could use it around the district. It was something they were earmarking specific to Salina.
Correct. It's both the elementary school and the intermediate school. The elementary school is the same particulate filtration system installed, is working very well, and they don't need to open the windows during warm spells, which makes it even that much more efficient.
Okay. My, my question would be, because there still is quite a sizable cost that would have to come out of either our general fund or some other situation, since we do have the infrastructure committee looking at air conditioning as one of its conversations. If we were to, which is why I wanted this, it wasn't something I felt the building and site could just go ahead and say, "Yeah, let's take the money," and then, and then what? We, the whole board has to make this decision because of the cost that was left incumbent upon us. Can we accept the $175,000 and put it on, in the bank, so to speak, on hold until we find out what comes out from the infrastructure committee? And if there is a bond that incorporates air conditioning of some fashion or another that gets approved, then we can fit, you know, use that money and put it towards finalizing the project? Or are they requiring us to take the money and do something immediately with it?
Since Mr. Baydun was nice enough to come today, maybe we'll just ask him direct, so I didn't get into that level of conversation.
Right. And I, you know, I don't know what, what they're, they anticipated.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We feel that there's an immediate need at Salina for the air conditioning system as compared to the other schools in the district. As Ron said, you know, the air filtration system that we put in at Salina is doing a great job. And as you know, Salina has the highest asthma rates in, you know, probably in Michigan. So we wanted to make sure that these kids have a clean environment through, throughout the school year, and even if there's summer, uh, programs going on, that they do so. And just to give you an idea, the, this air filtration system that we put in is supposed to, you're supposed to change the filters every five years, right, Ron?
Two.
Ten?
Tim.
Ten, ten, sorry. Um, every five years. And, um, it's working so well that they're having to change them every two and a half years. That's how much particulate matters in the schools. And when you look at, you know, Salina and, and, you know, Mr. Berry knows and anybody that lived in the south, and these kids face special needs, you know, the asthma rates, the ear infection rates, they all affect their learning. So I think it's a small price to pay to get that school air-conditioned completely and give them a clean environment. And we asked the board, you know, the donation is contingent upon the program going, you know, hoping to have it done by the beginning of the next school year. And as you know, at the beginning of September, we had some really hot days. So we'd like to get it done sooner than later.
Trustee, trustee Elaine?
Mr. Baydun, you, you work for AK Steel?
I represent AK Steel.
AK, okay. So I, I just wanted to ask, I know that, that area right around 48216, 209217, maybe it's not, 217, I think. Yeah, I think it's 217, 216. Anyways, those zip codes in southwest Detroit and accompanying River Rouge and that area, southeast corner of Dearborn are considered the most polluted in Michigan. I'm just wondering, is, and, and I know what's down there. I know that's where Marathon Petroleum is. I know that's where AK Steel is. It's where Zug Island is. It's obviously a lot of heavy industry, which is industry that, that built our, our city. But, uh, there is environmental degradation down there. There's no question about it. And Representative Hamud has had some hearings on that. I'm just curious if AK or if any of the other companies that maybe you know about, are you doing anything towards sustainability? I know of Ford's efforts with their green roof and that type of stuff. If not, I certainly hope that it's being considered because Salina, and it's a hundred-year-old building. We recognize that. We recognize the, the neighborhood. But everybody needs to be working on these issues.
Well, we, you know, one of the reasons that we got into this, as you know, Severstal bought the old Rouge Steel plant.
Right, right.
And it was a Russian company that basically ran the, ran the factory like they were in Russia, not like they were in the U.S., where they really didn't care about the community or nor about the, the particulate matter that was being emitted from them. AK Steel is an American company. They're based out of Cincinnati, Ohio. And they have really done a great job on running the plant. You know, when AK, when Severstal had the plant, I think they were in violation about 30,000 times in a year in terms of their operating permit. Since AK took over, last year, they've only had four deviations from the permit. And so they're well below their permit thresholds on the, and they're not the only one that's causing, you know, the pollution in the area.
I agree. And I, that's why I mentioned the others as well.
They are the only one that's kind of stepping up and wanting to invest in the neighborhood and make sure that the kids at Salina have a clean, healthy environment. You know, we can't air condition the south end or, you know, clean the particulate, but we can make sure that the kids, while they're in school, have a clean environment to study in. And like I said, you know, the asthma rates, the, the ear infection rates, all these issues affect the learning. So we wanna make sure these kids have, you know, whatever we can do to help. And we started off with a certain amount, but Dr. Maleko asked us to see if we can increase it. And we were able to do so. And there's a lot of competing factors for this money, and I'd hate to see the school district lose it.
Trustee Barry?
I thought trustee Elaine was gonna send you back to do some more arm twisting and get us some more money. My good friend, Nasr.
Glenn already did that. Based on the direction for trustee Elaine.
Because, because we, we asked him to go back and do some more arm bending.
My good friend, Nasser Baydun, slowing down. When he called me out that I'd know more about this issue, I started coughing. You didn't catch that? But this is real. This is real. My mother's a cancer survivor. I lost two aunts to lung cancer. And there was many, many of my mom's friends that had cancer, and I started thinking about it. As students, you know, okay, we will go through Salina, and I grew up in the south end in the seventies, so I'm sure it was way worse than it is now. As students, we're able to leave, to go to baseball games, leave the south end, you know, end up going to Forts End. You know, our fathers, eight to 10 hours a day, they left the south end. But our mothers stayed there 24 hours, seven days a week, so. And after a while, I started thinking about it. It was mostly the women that, you know, caught cancer, mostly lung cancer, the whole nine yards. So this is real. I mean, it's not a problem that we created. It's industry. Okay? So, yes, I think it would be a great idea. And we, we did discuss this at the building and site. And we didn't want just three board members making decisions on behalf of the whole community. We figured it would be a good idea to have this discussion here.
Well, especially since it's gonna be money we are going to either have to take out of our general fund, which is gonna take away from some other, um, programs and impact our school community and/or, which is why I was asking, could we hold off until we could find a way to fund it if, if we accept the money rather than having to move forward? If you're gonna tie our hands to having to immediately use that money, that, then you're asking us to remove half a million dollars out of our general fund for, and that's not a small amount of money. I understand the, the need of the community, but we also have lots of needs in this community. And, and it's hard to, you know, it's, it's that terrible decision you have to make of who, who's going to, you know, how are we dividing up the baby, so to speak? You know, who's gonna get, who's gonna get it? So I was hoping that we would be able to kind of move this along with when we are looking for other funding sources as well.
And like I said, Mary, there's a, um, there's, you know, there's a lot of competing factors for that money, and I was able, we were.
Yeah, which is why I didn't wanna put this off too much of our making a decision.
We were able to carve that out for this project. And, you know, I, we cannot guarantee that it'll be there when you decide to do it. But I think it's, you know, as you carve up the baby per se, there's certain special needs. And I think Salina is one of those schools that, and the students of Salina, that really need to make sure that the environment is clean for them. Because the rest of the, you know, Dearborn, they, you know, they have, it's, the air quality is pretty good. But at that school in particular, and with the large amount of students that are there, I think it's a, it's a small investment to make sure that the kids have a clean environment.
So the $175,000 would disappear within a certain amount of time?
Yeah, because we have to, we, the company has to allocate it to, you know, within a certain period of time.
Within a year or something?
Yeah, within a, so we've already been over six or seven months working on this program.
So you're asking for $500,000 to air condition plus the 175?
Well, I mean, that's, that's an estimate.
Is that going to be a motion in the future or what?
Well, if the, if the board would like to move forward, and I don't know, you said a 500,000 plus some additional costs, so minus the 175,000, is that correct, Mr. Justic?
It's about six, between six and 700,000.
Six, okay, so it is.
Yeah, so it's close to.
So, so it would be a decision if, you know, because, and I know you were pressing me as I came back to say this money may go, you know, just because of the competing interests of where they can use it. So I mean, it'd be a decision for the board. If we did do this, then the, I'll just say that, and again, we know that everywhere, we value all of our students. So we understand that the air quality is, is an issue. We have the actual testing system that's run by the government that's actually on the Salina property. So we value all our buildings. So this is a tough choice because we understand the competing needs. Now, having said that, if we did do this now, we would not have, it would be taken care of if there were some decision by the infrastructure committee after. So that would be now, or by the board, actually, I'm sorry. But there may be a recommendation that may come forward. So Salina would not have to be part of that because anywhere in the district that already has air conditioning, if, and again, I'm just saying hypothetically, if this does go, if, if there is, you know, to come forward because, and I've talked about this, that the only way we could air condition the whole district if we wanted to is through a bond with the 50 to 60 million. But that, Salina, just like McCullough, Eunice and other buildings that have it, would not have, would not be part of that cost. So it would actually be, you know, knock Salina in the, the amount that you would have to do for that building off.
Do we have the money right now in the general fund to do this?
Well, I mean, we have building in sight. Mr. Wall, do you wanna come up and say how we would be able to fund this if we'd made that decision?
We currently are allocating money to the building and site for a group of projects, you know, and, and operations sits down every fall and looks at what we're gonna do for the next subsequent year. There's always money in fund balance, too, if we wanna take money out of the fund balance to, to fund this project. So it's, the district isn't broke by any means, it just has a lot of needs. And we would talk about the infrastructure needs list, that's about 160 million dollars. So how do, you know, half a million dollars doesn't go a long way in 160 million.
Right.
So it's a matter of priorities.
Trustee Elaine?
Dr. Mead is just too polite, so I'll just, Mr. Baydun, if I can just ask the question. So what, what, what kind of a drop dead date are we looking at here? So six months do we have?
Well, we, I mean.
Next month?
I think you'd like us to say now.
You would like it, but I'd like you to tell me too.
It's not up to me, but we would like, you know, this, this project, you know, fewer to say yes today, you know, knowing how this, the process works, you know, we'd like to target that the system be operational by the school year, at the beginning of the school year next year. So I don't know how long.
So Mr. Grzinski, is that possible?
It is possible, but we need to start pretty quick to get the engineer drawings submitted to the general.
Speak low. Whoa.
There's another expense for your building.
Just so, that was just a light bulb went out, so the people at home that are watching.
Nothing, nothing untoward going on here.
So, and, and, you know, I, it would be right up against the, you know, plus we've got all the crazy kind of tariff stuff going on, supplies and materials.
Kind of afraid to ask any more questions.
I don't know, that wasn't your trustee's door.
It wasn't that question.
It wasn't me.
So what are you, so what are you recommending? When would the board have to make this decision?
Well, I, you know, we'd like to give an engineer a go-ahead by the end of October, even sooner. I mean, they've already invested a fair amount of, train has invested a fair amount of time to, to develop a set of specifications for us. So we're well ahead of the game in that respect. But the, the process is long.
I think we, I think AK's invested close to about 600, what, about 600,000 in the school so far?
Well, there was.
The air filtration.
The air filtration.
And then we air-conditioned the entire third floor.
Trustee Thorpe?
I think this would fall more to Mr. Grzinski and Mr. Wall. What about the funds that we get from the Wayne County Millage? Have we already allocated those for the next year?
They're allocated for this year already. So it would have to come out of the money we collect this year for next year. So it'd be after July 1st.
Okay. And is, would this have any impact on what we're already planning on doing for air conditioning in all the other buildings? This won't be reallocating the, the money that was to go towards those?
No, no, the, the, since they already had a common area like the auditorium, so they were on the short-term plan process. They already had something in place.
So the other buildings will still be able to move forward with their air conditioning?
Correct.
So what is our fund balance?
So just, I know you were talking about timing. This state law requires us to bid this out. So that process is going to take, after the plans are developed, which might take, I don't know, from a month, month and a half, depending on how much time gets allocated to it. And then the bidding process itself will take at least another month to get through and get to a board approval. So the, the startup of the process is very slow because of the state law that required to bid.
Okay. Any other? Yes?
It's just a comment. I'd like to thank Mr. Nasser Baydun. I know he's put a lot of time and effort. And I'm also thankful to AK Steel for recognizing that there's a problem and doing what they can to help our students at Salina School.
Can I just make a correction? I, I mentioned, I said Severstal. It should've been AK Steel with the previous donation, so please.
I didn't wanna correct.
Yeah.
Won't take credit where credit's due.
Just to make sure that you guys get proper credit. Thank you.
But in order to go for an RFP, do you have to have the board already approve the, the money?
At this point, no. If it's a board consensus to move forward, we would start that process. And when the board and the contract is actually awarded to a vendor, then the board would actually approve it.
Well, why wouldn't we approve that you go ahead with an RFP?
It, it becomes down to a budgeting issue. And basically, if, if that's a priority of the board, then we'll move forward and get that done.
Do we make a commitment when we do an RFP?
No, no, an RFP does not, we actually, actually will incur some architectural engineering costs to develop the system, to make sure we have a system to bid.
Oh, I see, I see.
Just like we did for Dearborn and Forts or Edsel Ford, we did, we had the architectural drawings ready, and then we actually go forward.
Trustee Elaine?
So, uh, would it be unreasonable to consider this for one other month or?
Till October.
Till October and then call the question in October? That'll give us time to get some feedback, give it some further thought?
Because we also have a meeting at the college next week that we could always add an item if we needed to, depending on the timelines.
What more do we need to know?
Whether the money's there.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, this probably has to go back to.
Whether we have enough money to do it?
Finance.
And we know that the money then would not be available.
The money is in the fund balance. There's no doubt about that. That, the money is there.
Will it impact anything else that, because we've already set the budget for the year, so.
That's part of what you do with budget amendment. If that's the direction of the board, then it would be part of the first budget amendment in January to add that money.
Well, the fund balance wouldn't go below 5%.
No, it would not.
No.
Because we're closer to 12% right now.
I was gonna say, we're almost here, closing in on 15, so.
What I'm hearing Tom say is that we should probably go out for an RFP now, then maybe next month, have building in sight and the finance committee meet and bring something forward.
I'm not sure if we have results back from those bids.
Well, no, I'm saying just, let's, let's start the process, is what I'm saying, I'm hearing, so.
If I can interject, that, it wouldn't hurt the board to start the project. And it's a minimal investment to approve it, and this way, we can move forward.
And we'll know what we're dealing with.
And we know exactly what we're dealing with. And at least we can, I can, you know.
Go back to your.
Go back to AK Steel and say that the process is moving forward. And then, you know, we can get a, we can give you a definitive number on what the project's gonna cost. It might be less, because, you know, Tim's, uh, always very conservative in his numbers.
As well as he should be.
Just one thing on the financing, Mr. Wall, and I need you to correct me in case I'm wrong with this. But based on what Mr. Thorpe said with the Millage money, which would be for next year, so you could, technically, if, and again, if the board wanted to move forward, you could take it off, out of the fund balance this year, but earmark it, uh, money next year.
Yeah, that is a possibility, yes.
To repay, basically.
Through the Millage or another source. And the architect cost is minimal. It's not a lot of money to actually get the design and go through that process.
I like Mr. Baydun's recommendation. How about other board members?
I agree.
People? Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with directing you to start the process.
Good.
Thank you.
Let's do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could just add one quick thing. The, I, I, the staff at Salina does a great job providing after-school activities for the kids in the air-conditioned environment. So they really do a good job of trying to get the kids there during non-school times.
Good.
We can note also that next month will be Salina's 100th celebration. 100 years. I, I'm really grateful for the fact that, that building is still standing.
We, we have many buildings that you wouldn't think, you know, they're, they're not museums.
And that is Mr. Grzinski and a lot of the people that take care of our buildings and, and work so hard to, yeah, I'm pointing David over, over there.
So, next item, please.
I'm not getting any more updates from trustee Thorpe, so that can't be good regarding the game. But the next item is Board of Education business, acknowledgement of correspondence.
Anybody? Next item?
Board member committee organizational reports. I think the only one was policy, and we already went over three reports, so, oh, I'm sorry.
Since our last meeting, the Dearborn Education Foundation held their first meeting of the year. It was more of a planning meeting, so they were setting their goals for the upcoming year, trying to increase participation and donations from school employees and parents and alumni.
Good.
Um, the policy committee, we went over the policies that we're going to be approving next week. We reviewed.
Next month?
Sorry, next month. We reviewed, which ones was it? Okay, I'm not gonna find it really quick. No, these were the ones we talked about already. So the promised zone, so we have been given the opportunity to apply to be a promised zone, which means that federal Pell and TIP grants and local donations will cover 100% of the tuition of students that go to Dearborn Public Schools, that go to Henry Ford Community College. So they would give us approximately $96,000, and then we would find donations to cover the rest of that. We're working out the numbers. We're working out the numbers. This is just something that we, uh, want to apply for. It's not guaranteed. If there's an opening, we will get that. Um, one of the requirements would be that the, all students, all students would have to, uh, complete a FAFSA, and, um, we need to get board approval as to, as for it to be an agenda item for formal discussion. Um, we need to set the meeting and give twenty to forty days of notice before we have that board meeting. The board would have to vote and approve on moving forward to submit an application, and then, um, we see if we become accepted. So this would be an amazing opportunity if we're able to be given this, uh, and approved, uh, because we get to send our, our high school students to Henry Ford College, uh, for free.
Let me ask you, why is that a policy? Why would that be a policy committee issue?
Okay, that would be something I can mention. You know, Dr., it's, uh, Dr. Mosalem, uh, want, we wanted to make sure the board was informed, and we thought that going through the policy committee, like we do in some other, uh, aspects, would be a good way to get the board informed, and then there'd be a committee report. And the fact is that the policy committee was meeting today, and it was kind of the easiest way to get out.
So it's really not a policy?
It's not a, it's not a policy, it's an approval, and I'm trying to remember...
It's a program, isn't it?
Yeah, and sometimes like, um, you know, grad, you know, another thing the policy committee will do is sometimes when we have to make those exceptions on, you know, graduations and things that come in, when we have those special circumstances, it goes through policy. So this is kind of what we thought. It's not a policy, though, it's nothing that you would vote on as a policy, but we wanted to make sure the full board was informed. It's been in, uh, briefs by Dr. Mosalem, and that's basically why we decided to bring it to the policy committee, just to get a report out here.
Okay.
Correct.
Good, thanks. Any, any others? Okay, next item, please.
Board member or superintendent commentary?
Trustee Elaine?
I'd just like to, uh, give thanks to, um, Dearborn Police Department, City of Dearborn. Uh, I have tried to avoid being over there during the worst times of day, but, uh, I have noticed, uh, police, Dearborn Police, being at stout school.
Oh, good.
And, uh, they really did facilitate, I think, the, uh, traffic over there.
Good.
Because that has the potential for being a really bad situation. It backs up so bad right now, I can't get out of my neighborhood either way, um, but the Dearborn Police and, and the city's really done a great job, and, and I appreciate it. Uh, I know that Wayne County also worked, uh, on getting the signals, so, Dr. Malekko, I appreciate everybody getting on that. I know it was a, we were negotiating between a bunch of different folks, but, yeah, thank you.
So we have our administration to thank, as well as the police department for getting this done.
Yes, yeah, I appreciate it.
Trustee Petlicoff.
Well, I'm going to take on, on Trustee Elaine's comment, because I've noticed that there was a particular, um, blog feed about the Dearborn Police being at our schools and ticketing parents, dropping off their students, and there was a couple of people who thought it was important that they should just be able to ignore the rules of the road, um, to get their students into the building at the, at the danger of other students and, and parents. And there was a sentiment and attitude, and I will tell you, having been on PTA Council and the Traffic Safety Committee that I had formed, um, and run through the PTA Council for many years, and having sat with the Dearborn Police on their traffic commission for a long time, um, it's disappointing to hear from some parents who think that their rights supersede the safety of other students. And I, too, appreciate the police department's added efforts, and I would like to say to those parents who think that, um, their child, um, deserves, uh, front door service and that, and that they don't need to either walk. All of our schools were built as walk-to buildings. That was the whole concept of them when they were, um, put into the neighborhoods in the first place. It wasn't supposed to be a drive-through, drop-off situation, and right now, I'd like everybody to respect both the parents who are doing it correctly and the police who are trying to, um, protect the parents and students who are doing it right, and everybody else to have a little patience and a little common sense, and to, um, understand that, uh, they're all going to get there. One way or another, all of the students are going to arrive into those buildings, and we want them to arrive safe and secure and in good mood, and not to have the kind of, um, drama outside of our school buildings that some parents, um, want to persist in, uh, behaving badly as drivers around the building. So everybody just needs to take a minute and do the right thing. And if you have to park a block away, park a block away and walk your student into the rest of the building.
Thank you. Trustee Elaine?
Uh, that being said, that's in keeping with the Healthy Dearborn Initiative also, and Dr. Malekko, recall, I mean, we, we all remember the Walk to School Day, so, uh, let's promote those as well.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Trustee... Trustee Petlicoff's comments remind me of a story, probably five, six years ago, where we had one of those parents that was coming into our parking lot and just, just driving recklessly. Remember, uh, Brian Wisting, God bless his soul, and principal of that building, uh, banned that parent from coming into our lots. They lost the privilege for ninety days, had to drop off their son or daughter a couple blocks away, or maybe walk or something like that. That's just, I mean, that's, that was one way to deal with that, so, this person was just...
And most of the parents request the police to be at the schools, you know, it's not, it's not, um, the building administrators who are being the big band meet, the parents want the, the safety of...
Ninety-nine percent of our parents do the right thing. It's always that one.
You only need one.
That's what drives you crazy.
Any other? Yeah, yes, sir, superintendent.
So I appreciate all the comments by all the trustees, uh, on that issue, and I thank Chief Addat, he's fantastic, and his whole department, we work so well together, and I thank him for being cooperative with everything. He, him and his staff and Mr. Rangos was instrumental in some of the, you know, communication and getting that out, uh, Trustee Elaine and Trustee Petlicoff, and so, again, I'm very grateful for our administration, and Dr. Ball was out there and the whole team, uh, Tom Wall, so thank you. I just wanted to mention, though, too, that we're excited, um, it's, I know it's a little ways away, but we actually had three, and I emailed the board, we had three presentations that were approved for the National School Board Association Conference, uh, social media...
Congratulations.
Thank you. School improvement and graduation intervention, so board trustees that are interested, there's still time, but the registration...
We're taking over the building, huh?
Yeah. So, uh, there's time, but I know we had a great experience with the trustees that went last year, and this year we're going to be able to showcase on a national level, and again, it's the largest conference I've ever been at in my career, so I appreciate the support of the board. One thing is, we, it is required to have a trustee there. I know, Dr. Mead, you had said you may be interested, but if other trustees will fit everyone into that, um...
When is it?
It is coming up, I believe, at the end of March.
March, yeah.
Oh, that's funny.
Yeah, so there's a lot of time, but we get early registration between, uh, as long as, October, but we have to register by the end of October to get the discount rate, so...
Where?
Philadelphia.
Philadelphia.
Woo! I get to see the Liberty Bell.
Uh, can we mention that tomorrow there is going to be a declaration of year of, uh, year of health in Dearborn at the city council chambers? I think it's seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, so...
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty or seven o'clock?
Seven thirty or seven o'clock?
I thought I saw seven thirty.
Is Danine, did Danine leave?
Here, I have it in my...
You got it?
I can see what I put in my phone.
It is seven thirty.
I put seven thirty.
Seven thirty at the council meeting, and they asked me to attend jointly with the mayor for that declaration. And again, they've done a great job with the Healthy Dearborn all over, and we've done our part, and we appreciate the, the teachers and, and the, all the union, that we worked on some contract language that helps increase recess in other times within the, so all of our employees, our parents, yeah.
Which was very well received at Healthy Dearborn.
Yes, so...
And by the kids, I'm sure, too.
Yeah.
The walk and roll, and the walk to school and all those, I'm, I always join them for a few times a year as well, so...
Let's just go.
Oh, we're almost out of it. Two quick announcements, uh, we have a school board election coming up in November, and I know our PTA Council is holding a forum, and the forum will be September twenty-fifth at six PM in this room right here. Again, it's September twenty-fifth, so if you're interested to hear from the great candidates that we have, September twenty-fifth, six PM at tonight. And the other announcement is, uh, it's time for smoke on the grill. Uh, we're very thankful to the Dearborn Goodfellas and their annual event, which helps supports, uh, helps supports PTA and our students, so, and that is, I need my glasses here.
September twenty-seventh.
September twenty-seventh.
All right, that's a busy week.
Four to seven o'clock.
Four to seven PM, thank you.
Get your tickets from PTA or Goodfellas. Well, and, uh, school administrators have them as well, so...
Everybody's trying to sell them.
If you want to buy from PTA...
I'll put a plug in for PTA. If you buy it from your school PTA, the total price of the ticket, am I correct? The total price of the ticket gets reimbursed to that school?
Hundred percent.
Yeah, a hundred percent of that ticket goes back to your school PTA. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, next item, please.
Requests for information and/or future agenda items.
Yes, sir?
Two quick ones, uh, we start out tonight's meeting with a great, uh, video from our, you know, welcome back to school, uh, I, with our, when our thing's settled down, when you get a chance to talk to Malekko, I'd like to get, you know, the number of our students we have in each program outside of our schools. STEM, early college collegiate program, you know, magnet school, Michael Berry Career Center, just the student count at each program that we have.
You mean outside of their home high schools?
Outside of their home schools, yeah, yeah. That would be a great way to, for us to see the numbers.
Because Michael Berry is, of course, our school.
Well, yeah, they're all our schools, I'm sorry, yeah. Oliver, yeah. That was a great way to, you know, market the programs, too. And the other thing I have is, uh, last spring, you gave me a, a report on fifty-one students at Dearborn High that were suspended two or more days. If I can get that updated for the whole year of this last school year.
Of the fifty-one students?
Well, fifty-one, if there was any more additions to, yeah.
For the whole year?
Yep. So for the whole year instead of just halfway through.
Can, can I assume, we just got the, um, M-Step breakouts from Dr. Peters? Can we, are we going to be getting a report soon about that?
Here? Well, he usually report, he usually does a presentation in November, so it'd be scheduled.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm, I was trying to figure out when.
It's usually annual, always in November.
Okay.
Um, you have the reports of the, the scores and everything that are in the board brief, but as far as him coming before, we've done it usually...
It'll be in November? Okay. I just wanted to make sure it was going to be fairly soon. Um, can we remind everybody again, too, because I was seeing also on the blog sites about the NWEA? Um, we need, we need to, and they were confused, they thought it was state testing kind of thing, and we need to, um, have the parents understand that that's our testing in order to see where their student is beginning at, and that's why it's given at the very beginning of the, um, start of the school year, so that we have something to gauge as we, um, move the student forward, um, because I think there is still confusion by a lot of parents about...
Just some clarification.
Yeah, why, why we're doing it as soon as they're walking through the doors, basically.
Okay. Anything else? Next item, please.
Future meeting dates. Monday, September seventeenth, twenty eighteen, Henry Ford College Board of Trustees meeting, seven PM at the Henry Ford College Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Roswell Boardroom. Monday, October eighth, twenty eighteen, P through twelve, Board of Education meeting, seven PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
The last item, you said, is seven PM, October eighth?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Uh, next, next item, please.
Next item is, it's up to you.
Oh, should we, should we acknowledge?
Oh, you...
Hi, who, who is this?
Miller.
Miller.
Miller Elementary.
Oh, thank you.
Have a wonderful school year, with love, Miller Elementary students. Thank you.
I'm back at you, Miller.
Yeah, thank you very much, yeah.
So we are adjourned?
Yes, sir.
All right.